Apache Junction Work Session Roll Call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Biggs.
Present.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Here.
Councilmember Nassar.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Okay, agenda items. Presentation Discussion on Resolution Number Twenty One Thirty Six. A resolution of the mayor of the City of Apache Junction. To enter into a intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation. For the city's Winchester Road Improvements Project. To install bicycle and pedestrian improvements, roadway expansion, and drainage improvements. Morning.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Raquel Schatz, Public Works Department. Here to discuss. A dot intergovernmental agreement for Winchester Road from Twenty Ninth Avenue to Southern Avenue. So back in twenty twenty. We went through MAG and we received some more funds through the Penale Area Bridge Arterial Program. So these are like the five entities that are Penale Counties, towns and cities that belonged to MAG. In which they had a cap for these projects. And all that was available was one million three hundred and forty nine hundred thousand dollars and change.
Is that all? It's pocket change.
You know what, though, unfortunately, that's not even enough to do a roadway project. That's the unfortunate part of it, you know, we strive to try to get as much funding as we can and everything else like that. And through this funding source, we're always, it's for like road widening. So it's just like, that covers like half of it. But yeah, so we've been very successful in getting projects through this funding source year after year. So with this, we're anticipating, well, the purpose of this whole IGA and why we need to get it done fast is so that. A dot can go ahead and select a consultant and we can get started on design ASAP. So we're anticipating design to begin early twenty twenty two. The duration of the project for an A dot project is eighteen to twenty four months, but we have ways of expediting it so that we can try to fit it in with a, within a year time schedule. Public Works, we're really trying to create shovel-ready projects, so when MAG has available funding, we can say, we've got our project ready, it's federally, it's federally done. You know, here it is, let's, let's, let's do it, kind of a thing. So, so this is one of these that we're trying to like really rush through design so that we can have these shovel-ready projects. And be able to obtain the remaining portions of funding that we don't get with these, with these grants. So that's why here, you know, we also get it done quick enough. With the money that we, that is over the federal funded amount. We are able to go through closeout process through MAG again, which is only November and October, at the end of every year. And we can request the additional funds of those, of those projects. And that still brings us down to a city match of five point seven percent as opposed to what this, this one shows currently. So, and then right now, we're showing that construction's anticipated to begin in twenty twenty three. So currently, the existing conditions, this will be our third phase of Winchester. The first phase at the very top is we did back in twenty eleven. That's from Sixteenth Avenue to Old West Highway, in which we did the three lanes, the bicycle lane, sidewalk, curb gutter, streetlights. The second phase, we just completed last, the year before. Which we did the same, this, this phase was Southern to Sixteenth Avenue. And this current phase that we're working on is Twenty Ninth Avenue to Southern Avenue. So down at Twenty Ninth Avenue, there's storage units, there's also a rec, a mobile home park. And so right there at Twenty Ninth and Southern, it's three lanes. You get down a little bit further down this, or a little bit north up the street, Twenty Sixth Avenue, it goes down to two lanes, there's that big channel also on the, on the east side of the street as well, too. And then Southern Avenue, it's on the south side of the intersection, it's two lanes, north side of the intersection, it's three lanes. So currently, right now, it's, it's kind of a safety hazard. Because the, the lane that goes northbound. Is, it's misleading that it currently lines up with, with, with the opposite traffic. So with this roadway expansion, it would make it lot, much safer, we'd have the three lanes and it would match into this. Cars can go through without having to do some kind of a skew to get into the, into the proper land they need to get into. So as I mentioned, the existing conditions at, at Twenty Ninth Avenue, it's already widened up, wide, wide as what we need it to be. It's got streetlights, it's got curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides, it's got that channel. But once you get a little bit further down the street to Twenty Sixth Avenue. There's a portion of sidewalk on the west side that's missing, there's also four streetlights that are missing. We can, we can widen it out to the, the three lanes with this project. And I know it shows there storm drain is city-funded, it's just that by the time we got to that one point three four nine million dollars. That storm drain had exceeded the funding, so it's shown there as city-funded, however, with, you know, we go back out to closeout funds, we can obtain, we can obtain and get that all paid for through federal funds. And then again, like I mentioned, that's, then at Southern Avenue, we add that third lane, you can, you can see in that picture there, the colored picture, you can see where the traffic, where the truck is going into the opposite, opposite traffic there, it's kind of lining up, where you kind of have to do a short skew. But with the, with the additional lane, it will line up just perfectly. Cost share, so in order to expedite this and get this thing going, there's not much. Funding sources that we can get that will fund design, so we're, so the city's paying for the design to get it completed, federal funds. Construction, where it has the green arrow, that was. The maximum amount available through this funding source. So you'll see that the one point three four nine million dollars is the federal fund at nine, ninety four point three percent. The eighty one fifty, five eighty eight is the city's five point seven percent of that. And the remaining portion of that, it's city one hundred percent fund because that's exceeded what the available amount there was. However, to the right of that, it, you know, I mentioned again that we, you know, we go to closeout for this, we can, we can request that nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. With the city match only being fifty two thousand. So the numbers to see here that you're going to see in the intergovernmental agreement is you're going to see that the construction city funds is at one point. Roughly one million dollars, so one million two thousand one hundred and forty four dollars, you're going to see that in the IGA. And then you're also going to, you, you add it up and then it comes out that the city's share is actually one, one million three hundred and fifty two thousand one hundred and forty four. Once again, MAG closeout funds, we've been very successful in getting those. That's going to bring that, almost a fifty fifty share, we're going to get that closer to that five point seven percent share.
Raquel, can you explain what that means, the MAG closeout funds?
So every year, MAG tries to utilize all the fundings that they have. And whatever projects didn't go through, whatever leftovers they had from other funding sources, well, they combine it in this one bucket. And so like, for example, this year, they have thirty million dollars available. And that's available to all MAG cities and, cities and towns are available for this. So they, they try to first offer it to those entities who want to. Move their project forward, so if you have a twenty twenty three project and you're, and you're ready, well, we, they, they can move it up to twenty twenty two. The, the second tier is when projects need to request additional construction funds, which is what the tier that we fall into. Because this one, we can't, we, we can't advance it because it's so close and the design hasn't been completed. We fall into that second tier, which we need, we're requesting additional funds, construction funds. The third tier is, you know, they, they do street sweepers, whichever street sweepers didn't get funded through the call for projects, and then the final one is design. So the city, we just submitted for closeout funds for, for two construction projects, Idaho pedestrian project. And also Old West Highway sidewalk project for a total of two million one hundred and fifty one dollars and two hundred six, one hundred fifty one thousand two hundred and sixty three dollars.
Nice.
So you know, we, we, we try to use whatever MAG has available out there to lessen our city share.
It, it sounds like it's a good idea, too, to have those shovel-ready as best you can. Cause you can be right there to get it, you gotta apply for them or how does, yeah.
Yeah, and some of these projects, we have to be very creative for, because like this, this, this funding, it's only for road widening. So if we want to do bicycle lanes and sidewalks and other stuff, then we have to go to a different committee and request additional funds for the same projects. We get two funding sources, we mirror them into one project. It's a little complicated, but we've been successful twice already in doing.
Good job, good job, yeah, thank you for explaining that.
Raquel, so right now. Through the MAG funding that we have, it's one point three million and change, and then we're doing one point three million and change. So there's, in, in. Next year's closeout funds, there's the potential to get nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, though, to reduce our cost then.
Correct.
Awesome, thank you.
And at that time, our, our design should be completed, too, so if there's any overages also in that construction that's beyond this nine hundred and twenty thousand. We can request for whatever else is, is the overages. And the, the process of how MAG does stuff, they do a call for projects, so we applied for this in twenty twenty. But when we go to construction in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four, well, those construction prices are no longer good. So we can request for how much ever we're over, the construction is, the construction cost estimate is over from what we received.
And so if we weren't a member of that, we wouldn't be able to apply?
Correct, correct, like, so when we moved from CAG over to MAG, there's only us and fi, and four others. I mean, we, we reap those benefits of, of doing so, and this Penale County, this Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. Is only available to those five cities in Penale County that are part of MAG. So where before, it was only like six hundred thousand dollars a year to be split through all the CAG people, all, all the CAG cities and towns, so. I mean, yeah, so since we're now part of MAG, we get that bigger bucket.
Thank you for that.
I have a clarifying question, Bryant, are we, do we pay a membership into MAG?
Yes, we pay a membership into MAG.
Okay, so.
And half for almost twenty years, yeah.
I mean, it's clearly worth it, we, this isn't the first project that we get from that, and it's definitely a, a value to the city.
The city, the city taxpayer's not paid one dollar in, how much are the, the street sweepers, Matt, three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred thousand? For the entire time we've been in MAG, we've had, with Raquel and her team, they've done tremendous work in getting some significant dollars coming in.
Yeah, I think we've had a project every, every construction year, I mean, we've since twenty nineteen, so I mean. We've got two coming up, coming up this, this next summer. Then we've got this project in twenty twenty three, we've got Delaware coming in twenty twenty four. And fingers crossed, we'll have Tomahawk from US sixty to Southern in twenty twenty five.
Yeah, that's why I ask, cause we get questioned at budget time, what are we paying and why are we a member and yada, what do we get out of it? Here's a good example of what we get out of it, so thank you for that.
No problem, so.
Yeah, I think our membership's like twenty something thousand, so you could do the math.
And this is the organization that the federal government distributes these funds to, you have only access to them, so if you don't, if you aren't a member of MAG, you don't get it for this section of Penale County.
Yeah, great work, Raquel.
So like I mentioned before, timing is extremely crucial, I thought we could, you know, maybe just do the, the two weeks out like we would typically normally do. However, A dot's waiting for an, an agreement to be done so that they can go ahead and get a consultant on board. So, any questions?
Yeah, so it's on consent for tomorrow night unless we have any, any more questions.
Any other questions? I was sitting back here having none question myself, I was going to say, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Raquel.
Okay. Well, our next one is presentation and discussion on traffic signals within the city.
So Your Honor, as Mike comes up, we've had a couple, maybe Councilmember Gremmell maybe wants to kick this one off, I know we've had a couple other councilmembers ask about this, but we have. Mike tonight here to present the, what I asked him to do is say, hey, we need to give a one-on-one, this is a great opportunity, we did this a few years back. And there's a lot of confusion because we're on the corner of the connection to Maricopa County. They have two significant routes that are owned by A dot. And when you see the map, you'll see how many of these lights we actually do control and which ones we don't, so Mike, come on up.
Mayor Council, Mike Weaver, Public Works Director, Kelly, did you want to get it going or?
Well, I just was going to say, I brought this forward to Bryant because I've had several constituents come to me and say. You know, I'm so frustrated with the lighting system, what can we do differently to move traffic, I sit at this traffic light forever. So what I did was I gave Bryant and Mike some areas that have been brought to my attention. And, and Bryant had explained to me, there's a lot more to it than just, you know, flipping a switch or doing a change on a computer or something. So I thought it was important that I get, you know, educated on it and also, you know, the public get educated on kind of how the whole process works.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do my best, not a traffic signal expert, but have enough knowledge to be dangerous on the subject, so. I think one of the main questions was Ironwood and Thirty Sixth, or that's one I remember anyway. And the problem there is the, the capacity of the interchange at US sixty and Ironwood and. And the volume that we currently have on Ironwood, so typical, we have about forty thousand ADT on Ironwood a day. A four lane is pretty good, up to about thirty five thousand cars. And then if you add in a signal that everyone is using, the turn movement on, it just multiplies the inefficiency of it, so. We've had Kim Lee Horn look at that particular intersection a few times. And the problem is, is that when it turns red up at US sixty. Before it turns green again, in the morning, for example, we're full to baseline or further south. So if we try to do something tricky with Thirty Sixth, maybe. Let that traffic from Thirty Sixth North go. Then bring them out on the end of it, then the queue or the amount of people waiting in line starts extending further and further and further, so. They go through all their scenarios, do the, you know, there's some. Manual work, but they have all, computer simulators for that, too, and what we currently have is the best scenario for that situation. Now, when SR twenty four opens up next summer, we'll likely bring them in because we'll want them to look at. A couple of places on Ironwood, obviously, but in particular Thirty Sixth. And at some point, when we start improving Ironwood from Elliott up to Guadalupe, then Guadalupe up to Baseline, and Baseline up to US sixty, we'll have to work with the DOT. What can we do at that intersection, because now the houses are built, we'll be back to where we are now, so. We need two lanes going out of Ironwood on US sixty somehow. I'm not sure, I haven't talked to the chief, but say Signal Butte, if you're heading north and then going to go west on US sixty. There are two turn lanes. And the honor ramp looks a lot like ours, there's two lanes right away and then it merges. And I don't know. If that merging point causes more problems than the backup we'd have, so. You know, it's something that we'll have to check into as time goes, but. I mean, I guess we'll get rid of the problem hopefully for a little while, and then it'll be back, but it's, it's, I guess, a good problem to have, so.
It's those signals on the entrance ramp. People know how to merge, they know how to get on a darn freeway.
I would think so.
But this stoplight that you have to sit and wait, you know, some people just run it.
And we have, I think, going north, but again, this is not my wheelhouse, but we. We don't have enough traffic going north of sixty on Ironwood, we could give up one lane and make a turn lane, but it's just how it would operate on the ramp and going, I'm, I'm assuming it works fine, but again, I'd leave that to the experts. Let's see, I'll try to get through a few interesting facts, maybe. Apache Trail is coordinated, so those are interconnected from Idaho to Meridian, so the idea is we want traffic moving down Apache Trail. We did that, oh, probably two years ago. And what that does is increases the weight on Phelps, it increases the weight on other streets, but. You know, more winds, if there's more traffic on one street, we want that to move through it, if. If you live on the east side of town and you want to go to Walmart and you have to stop at every light, it's likely you'll find somewhere else to go instead of, so. Main, main arterial, let's get them moved through it, the others just have to take their turn. Let's see, on Ironwood itself, north of sixty, we'll talk about, at Southern, our camera is down, the last windstorm took it out. And so that's operating on what we call recall, so it just goes, it, it has no idea if there's a car in a turn lane, it has no idea if there's. Traffic this way or that way, it just cycles around and does its thing.
Do we know when that'll be fixed, because that one, that one does come up every once in a while.
I talked to Garen today and he's, he's got emails in, but he has not heard anything back, and I don't know if that's to do with a lot of things right now, but. It's been a while and we assume we'll be waiting a while yet.
But those cameras tell the signal what, hey, there's somebody waiting.
Right.
Interesting.
It's one of the, where are they at, we have. The intersections controlled by cameras are there, Delaware and Apache Trail and Ironwood and Sixteenth. So the other ones are loop systems.
The one on Ironwood Sixteenth is the one that's down?
Ironwood and Southern.
Southern. Ironwood Sixteenth, had him left, it's forever.
So.
Go right.
When.
Why would I want to do that, I'm not.
When you, when you go on Ironwood, it's kind of a, traffic, which is kind of surprising, Ironwood and Sixteenth, Ironwood and Broadway, the traffic's kind of equal. You would think there'd be much more on Ironwood, but it's fairly equal, so we have them in a. I guess we pull them off of coordination, so they just. If it's, if it's a thirty second cycle or a forty five second cycle, it's equal both ways, north and south, but Ironwood rules. So if. If it's, say, a thirty second cycle on Ironwood and we're on second twenty nine and then thirty, and there's nobody on Broadway. It stays green, if somebody pulls up one second later, they have to wait the twenty nine seconds and then the thirtieth second, so it gets. Gets a little annoying that way at times, but if you're just out of that loop, you'll wait both cycles before you go, and.
That makes sense.
And then when we talked a while, I know I had a question on that same one, and they've got rid of that situation since, we used to have a multi-car for the turn lane. So if you're in the turn lane on Broadway, for exam, I said Broadway. Sixteenth, there's not one on Broadway, Sixteenth. If you're in the turn lane, if there were, if there was one car, it wouldn't give you the, the turn signal. So you had to have three in order to get that to go, well, Garen has pulled those off from, I think, every intersection in the city, so if there's one car, you'll go now.
Mike, could you go over the colors real quick?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that, there's a, and they're beautiful, by the way. The blue ones are the cities. The yellow ones are A dot. And red is Maricopa County. And we also have, there's one down at Guadalupe. What else am I thinking of, there's a, there's eighteen signals in the city right now, we have sixteen that have backup power and two that don't, the only two are, I think, are Broadway and San Marcos and Broadway and Delaware. But otherwise, so if we have a storm, they should operate for a while. And I'm sure I'm going to get a question on SR eighty eight and Idaho. If you drive home tonight and there's nobody at the signal, I don't know if it's working yet, or do you wait forever still?
You just still wait.
So we'll, we have calls into A dot on that one and at US sixty for the strange thing going on there, so.
Mike, how many cameras is there in the city for the lights?
Cameras that control the intersections are three. Cameras that are just cameras. We have those, luckily, Raquel's here, we have them on Apache Trail from. Is it Idaho to Meridian or do we go over to Winchester?
Over to Winchester.
Okay, also. Superstition, this, and, and Ironwood.
At all the blues. And that was done with our ITS project that we also got through that.
So it's on, it's on all of them, they're all connected. And just, just to clarify, there, you can only view. Just, just to clarify, there, you can only view, no recording available. So that was a big deal, when we put those up, and we had to be certain that they wouldn't record. Just verifying that they don't record.
And I don't know if you'll know the answer to this. So if you go on five-eleven, and you can pull up, you know, a highway where you want to go, you can see live pictures of whether it's traffic. So are those tied into that?
I don't believe they're tied into, they're tied into us at City Hall or down at Public Works, but we can visually see.
And you got...
Sorry. I tried to do my best to put my hands on here and stay here, but... I don't believe we're tied in, correct?
No, no, we're not. We're not tied in.
So Raquel and Mike, I'm gonna ask you that we give all of our comments on microphone.
You can come up, Raquel.
So come on up, yep. So we're gonna get, I'm gonna start getting really nasty grams from Matt McNulty here pretty soon.
He's back there.
So the cameras that we installed with the ITS plan and the citywide and all the blues, they're just for visuals so that we can go, we've got a centralized computer at Public Works that we can look and we can see what's going on. It doesn't do any detection, though. So it's just for, like, visual purposes, more so to see what... I mean, we can even count if we wanted to count there, so we can sit there and we can count, this is how many cars are going through, this is how many...
Well, and that's, that's what I wanted you to clarify, to see what's going on. It's like, are you counting cars, seeing if there's an accident, or exactly what are you...
We've used it, we had some questions down in Guadalupe, so it was, you know, it's nice for Garen to be able to just sit in his desk and look at that, and he can swivel a camera around, count traffic, see how it's backing up. If we're flooding, it's also nice for us to take a quick glance on what's happening.
But it's really not a monitored twenty-four-seven cameras.
We would, you know, it'd be great for us to have that so we could see things as far as we're concerned, but we know we can't, so...
Okay. Just to clarify.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Mike, so I think you said earlier that there are three intersections where the lights are controlled by the cameras, is that correct?
Correct.
And which three are those?
Be Delaware and Apache Trail, Ironwood and Sixteenth, and Ironwood and Southern. And if you guys would like, I've got kind of a little cheat sheet that, it might be handy for you if you get questions. Send it through Bryant and see what he thinks of it.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Your Honor.
Mike?
Yes.
I'm gonna jump back on that Sixteenth and Ironwood. So that's controlled by a camera, and you're saying if the camera picks up cars there, it'll go on a cycle?
They... So if...
Well, let me, let me, the reason why I ask is that you've got the Charter School just east or west of Ironwood, you got the high school on Ironwood heading south, and you've got that giant neighborhood on the northeast corner. That light gets ten cars back in the morning from going to school. When it does change to either go through the light to go to the Charter School or to hang the left to go to the high school, it's twenty seconds. You only get like four or five cars through.
Okay. Let me, let me get with Garen on that. I'm not, I'm not sure how it's got set up the way I understood it. It was not like that, so I'll, let me check with them and get that information to you.
All right, thank you.
But I don't, I don't want to guess on it, so...
Yeah.
So I can help you out a little bit with that one, Mike. So those three cameras, those three intersections, it's a grid smart technology. It has to go thirty feet up in the air so it can give us a good radius amount for us to do that. And the reason why we're using these cameras and technologies is because if we decide to put a bicycle lane or shift lanes, then we don't have to go through and redo loops. Every time we do a loop, per loop, it's three thousand dollars, where a camera's like twelve thousand dollars. So with these cameras, though, I mean, they've got the technology for, to adjust sensitivity. So if there's an issue, we can, instead of just letting it go like how it should be, we could program it in such a way that we can, you know, maybe see if we can increase the through for Sixteenth Avenue.
Were you saying that cameras are thirty feet up?
Yeah.
Would a tree cause confusion?
No, so that's the purpose of why it's up so high. And if you go out there currently, well, not right now because it's dark, but it might be on another pole on top of one, on one of those mast arms. So it'll be on an additional pole, and it looks just like a fisheye kind of a thing. It's a single camera. It almost looks like one of these ones that we have here on the walls here, and it just hangs, and it detects traffic on all four legs. But however, because Ironwood is a major arterial road, that's what sets precedence for the, for the, for the, for the cycle. So then that cycle's longer than the other cycles. But I mean, we can also do it so that we can maybe make it even or equal, and we can set it so that maybe it's like only certain days, certain periods of the days that we can set that to. But every adjustment you make is gonna affect the other leg of traffic.
That's true. That's true. And just, can I get a clarifying question to Gail's question about people looking in on these cameras? Now, the public, can the public look in? Okay, I was like, I'm like, can I log in? Yeah.
So Mike, am I correct in understanding that the only intersection with the ADA handicap no, sound, I don't know what you call it, is at Delaware and Apache Trail?
I think it is the only one. You know, is there one more? I know we're looking at, we're gonna look at Southern and Ironwood, but right now, it's just, I believe it's just that one.
Okay, so moving forward, as we put in new lights, I know we have a new light coming in at Meridian and baseline, and then obviously whatever lights we're gonna get down south in the new growth, is that gonna be built into those lights now? Is there...
I don't believe that one will be. I'll check with Emile on that, but I do not believe so, just because of, there's no traffic there, and I don't think they'd put it in unless we had a certain amount of pedestrian traffic.
Okay.
And then, just to go on on that question, is some, some areas, too, if you get too close to residential, those are a bad thing because the people that live immediately next to it, it's very annoying all.
I can hear the one at Delaware and Apache Trail at my house.
Really?
At night, I can hear it every night at my house.
Wow.
And it, and it'll echo, and I always know when it changes because it'll echo, and you'll hear every single side all night long.
Might be able to turn her down a little.
If you can do that, that would be fantastic.
I bet we each, you could go down the list, the line, and we'd each have that one light that just, hey, could you work on this one?
I know, I know. It is frustrating if you're waiting all the time, it really is.
Yeah, we all want to get where we're going, but which direction are you coming from? Who gets the priority?
Our guys spend a lot of time on it, and they ask a lot of questions, and when we can't solve it or if we need to change things, they do talk to the engineers on it just to make sure we don't mess something else up, so...
And Mike, just, just for the public's information, and ours as well, I guess, but what are the costs for these cameras to do the, you know, the light switching and stuff? I imagine it's pretty costly.
Do you remember the numbers on it?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand per intersection?
Per intersection.
So it's not, it's not terrible, so...
I think it's interesting to note that there are folks who still believe, like, Signal Butte and Crisman are also roads that are in Apache Junction that will come to you for questions. So, I mean, really, you're looking at Delaware, just one just west of Delaware, Ironwood and Phelps, but one on Tomahawk there. So we are less than half of the entire signalization in the city.
So as we go south on Meridian, will they continue to be Maricopa County lights?
That, that'll be something that we'll discuss as we build that, I would, I would imagine. There'll be some sort of partnership, probably some sort of IGA, and I doubt we'll get as lucky as we did on Meridian where we don't have any of them, but...
Mike, is there any talk about, I know it's on Ada, on SR eighty-eight and Lost Dutchman and eighty-eight, I know there's been talk about a possible light, a possible roundabout.
I haven't, I haven't, you know, I know they, they're always looking at things, but I have not heard that's in the queue at all, so...
I'm sorry?
It's, it's not on the tip.
Okay.
So it's at least five years?
Yes.
I just have a stupid question. Why does the state own that light up there on Apache Trail and Meridian? I mean, I understand Idaho and I understand US sixty, but why that one light?
I think it's a carryover from when it was the highway. I just think it was sitting on the border, and I probably just didn't know, didn't...
What to do with it.
What to do with it, yeah.
You know, I didn't even notice that, Tess. Thanks for pointing that out.
It's that one light all by itself that the state owns.
Yeah, all of those used to be probably state on the trail.
So we don't bring it up, right?
No.
That's why nothing ever happens at that light, I understand now.
We'd, we'd like to adjust it and stuff, but we don't want to, we don't want to buy it. I'm sure they'd give it to us, but we don't want it.
I, I remember when they put that light in, actually. It was about twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago.
Okay. Anyone else have any other?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next one is a discussion on board and commission members selection and talent bank application process, changing the Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Section two dash eleven dash two relating to the number of Health and Human Services Commission members, changing Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Section two dash eight dash two C, the residency requirements of Parks and Recreation Commission. Whoops, says me, sponsor. Okay. And that's something that we had asked about.
Correct. When we went, Your Honor, maybe I, at least three questions, at least at the staff level, we wanted to clarify tomorrow. You have on your agenda, direction to staff for health, for the possibility of looking at, we listed out three. This item allows for language that if you had any other questions, I would really, really, really like to talk about that tonight, but if not, that's okay. But Health and Human Services was one of them, the number of members on that board, the Parks and Recreation residency, non-residency, and then whether or not to keep or not keep the code question, or whether or not a city or an applicant has a city code issue or lawsuit. And so those were on for discussion, Mayor, and tomorrow night you'll be able to give us direction on which way you want to go on those.
Okay. I have a discussion from council.
So can we kind of break this up, given that there are three different pieces in this, so we don't get confused?
Yeah, start with the first one.
Okay. So regarding with Health and Human Services Commission, I know I, I brought that one up as well as the Parks and Recreation one, in regards to the fact that we only have five members currently on that commission, and given that the work that they do in the, the last couple of years, having a good talent bank of applicants to be able to appoint, but obviously no positions, the potential possibility of opening that up to seven to give us two more commission members there, which I also believe it would help in terms of the quorum and kind of help spread some opportunity there. So that's why I brought that up and that opportunity, so...
Anything else?
I don't think it would be an issue to add because we can oper, it can operate the way that it is just fine. As we grow, if we have additional people, but if we can't get the people on that board, it'll, it'll still work. I mean, I, I'm okay with it either way. I don't see an issue with...
That's the way I looked at it, like, the pros and cons. I mean, is there a problem with only having five people? You know, has there been problems? Have they not had, been able to meet a quorum? Have they ever had this problem or that problem with just five people? So I'm not saying we shouldn't go to seven, but what's the pros and cons and the reasons why or not, you know? Doesn't matter probably one way or another, whether it's five people or seven people or nine people or whatever.
We've never really had a shortage of applicants for that board.
Jennifer, have we had a problem having a quorum?
So when this board originally started out, council had seven members, and they all had to be city residents. However, at the time, population was down at eighteen thousand residents. Council in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one decided to shorten or to reduce the number because they were having issues with making quorum. So they went to five, and they also changed the residency requirement at that time to the three-two. I think it's time that council reconsider what they want this commission to do. When it originally formed back in the eighties, there was a very different purview of what they were supposed to be doing. A lot of things have changed. They were working with Pinale County on transportation issues. They were still working with homelessness issues. There was a homeless shelter in Mesa. So there were a lot of issues as the city incorporated that they were trying to address. That's kind of changed. You have several nonprofits out here. You have a food bank out here. So I'm happy to share any of the information with council as to what they used to do and where council would like to see this commission focus on. One of the things that I noticed in reviewing the minutes in two thousand and eighteen before I got here, one of the agenda items was to have the commission review the purpose and goals of that commission.
Also, Mr. Mayor, the dollar amount has changed over the years. When I first started, it was about a hundred thousand, and it then went down, and it's currently eighty thousand, I believe. So that has also, I'm not sure, when you have five members, I don't know if it's harder to decide with less money than there would be seven, or maybe there's more people asking for the need. So keep that in mind also.
So have we had a quorum problem in recent?
Not really, not since we've opened it up to where you can appear telephonically. So I think before, the board always had to be present. We've had a few participate by phone because they've been stuck at work or couldn't make it here, or they got stuck in traffic because of a road closure, and they just call in. So we are making more accommodations to make sure that we do have a quorum.
Except for all boards?
The other thing, too, was when Joel talked about the reduction, the original amount, I believe, was around a hundred, when they first started out, it was around sixty thousand. Later, it got up to the hundred thousand, but that was because we were also dealing with the transportation issue for seniors. When Mesa pulled out of that, Park and Rec took that over. And so there is more money that goes to that program, maybe Bryant would address...
We're actually spending more than a hundred, we're actually spending more than a hundred thousand of taxpayer dollars.
I think we're around a hundred and twenty-five.
Yes.
Yeah, I think eighty thousand is to the Health and Human Services, and we're roughly about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the appropriations. And it's not a grant, it's a contract for services is what we have with these organizations.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Would we, if we decided to go to seven, would we have another meeting, maybe a special meeting, to appoint two more, or would we wait until the next term expires and then just add a couple more to that?
Well, first, you'd have to have a direction to staff tomorrow night to change that code section, because under the city codes, you have to have at least four members, two direct staff to do legislative changes. And then, then that's a policy decision on how you want to do that. If you want to add two more or three more or whatever you want to add, you would change the stagger term part also. However, the people who currently have the terms, I would leave that alone, but you probably would want to somehow stagger it. I would recommend that.
And then would we go, right now it's three-two residents versus non-residents, would that change, would we keep it at the three or the two and have the five residents or vice versa, or...
Well, most of them, isn't it four, at least four people? That have to be a resident?
It can't exceed a majority of the commission, so...
At least four have to be residents if you go to seven.
And Joel, they would need to change code before we start appointing members.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely, this is just for the discussion purposes.
Well, and I think that that also brings up another question that I know at least Tess and I have had, is why do we wait until every October to appoint board and commission members? If there's a vacancy on a board, you know, if somebody resigns or leaves or something happens, do we have an opportunity to take from the talent pool who just applied during that last round and reach out again? And, you know, do we, do we have the ability to do some spot appointments and things like that, which is something that I, I know I personally would, would like to see, rather than waiting until October on that next piece, so...
That's what Brayden and I have discussed, because I'm all, I brought it up to him that we just interviewed people, okay? So let's say this month, somebody resigns for whatever reason, who just got a, you know, was on the, some board or com- So let's say this month, somebody resigns for whatever reason who just got a, you know, was on the, some board or commission. We should be able to just go back to those people that we just interviewed and, and contact them to see if they wanna fill a vacancy. We don't need to wait till next October.
And we've done that.
We have.
Yeah, so.
In the past.
But we should do it every month.
No.
Every month?
We've done it in the past when there was a vacancy and then we go through this whole process again. And so, it became, as long as they had a quorum, you don't have to rush to put somebody on. Now, we've never had an instant, incident, incident that I know of where we haven't had a quorum when someone resigned or stepped aside. But, in the past, when all of a sudden we'd have a vacancy, we'd do exactly that and they were filling in a term and we already had a quorum, so that, there really wasn't a need to do it.
I can see a reason to do it would be that we may have people that didn't get on a board that were strike while the iron's hot, if you got people that are applying.
So then we have to reopen it to everybody that had applied prior and announce that any other new people that may wanna apply?
Couldn't we just pick from the pool of applicants?
From the pool of applicants that we've already got, that we've already interviewed.
For everyone that wants to resign off a board, there might be somebody who decides to join a board that wasn't there for the original interview process.
Well, then they got the annual time to apply, but for something like this where you're, where you're filling in, is, would that be a legal thing, Joel? Or would you have to open it up to everybody? Or could we just say, look, we've got applicants already. If, if some, if a complete new person comes and wants to apply, there's an annual time to apply, let them do it. But these people showed up, they were interested, they applied. Why not take the opportunity? Can we legally do that?
It's a policy decision, but I would suggest you have something in the code that says, in the case of vacancy, the following procedure shall be used.
Pick from the pool of people?
Yes.
And I would just offer, if we do go down that path and we open up the code and, and we may be doing this for direction tomorrow night from five to seven, and you can list that, there is a big difference in the boards and commissions you have. From a city manager perspective, they're almost viewed in three different views. There's ones that we have to have, there's ones that kind of are important, and then there's some that don't even meet and haven't met since I've been here. And if you are asking me my opinion or my recommendation would be if it's in like Parks and Rec and if it's in library and Pam and Liz can keep cranking along, they do not have appropriation power, they do not have dollars they're looking at, I would say let's wait till October. The industrial municipal property corporation and a few others that don't meet, we can wait till October. Planning and zoning, Arts Commission, maybe even the Board and, Board of Adjustments that are statutory, maybe even Health and, you guys, they appropriate dollars. You may want to put that in your policy piece tomorrow to say, hey, for those higher priority boards, let's get those here. And we've done that, Sewer Board is another one. Sewer Board got down to like three people one time and we, we hustled up a recruitment process mid-year. It just, just remember when you go through the process or you bring it in, it, it stops what we're doing. And it stops, we have to kind of pump the brakes. Staff has to either go, depending on what the policy is, which isn't a bad thing. I'm just saying that's what, what, what ends up happening. And from a, I'm always having to prioritize, there's a lot to do. To me, that priority is, and, and you can tell us which boards are the ones that are most important that we would bring forward.
And I, I would, I would agree with that. I mean, I, I by no means think the Construction Board of Appeals that has never met needs to, you know, we need to have those filled, but I think you're right. Planning and zoning, Board of Adjustments, Parks and Rec, you know, the, the kind of heavy hitters. But I would also say quarterly, I mean, I don't think this has to be a monthly process by any means. That's a lot of time from staff, that's a lot of our time, you know? And then in terms of the applicant, the applicant process, my thought would be if they were open all the time, I don't believe there's really any staff time to have the application open. It's the review process of, okay, well, these people have reapplied, you know, or applied during this quarter, now we're going to interview them. Because I do think Robert's right, you know, you may get somebody who missed the deadline who wants to apply but doesn't wanna necessarily wait until next year to, to go through that process. So, interviewing just the people that applied and interviewed, well, my personal philosophy would be that we'd wanna at least do some form of a quick interview again before reappointing because their interview in October, I'm not gonna remember in July.
No, but the other thing is to remember how much work was put into these packets that we were given. Do we, if we're gonna start doing this quarterly, do we wanna put that on our clerk staff to do these, the same type of packets all over again? And that's a lot of paper, it's a lot of time, and it's a lot of effort. That's the reason I said draw from the pool of what we already have. If we, if we're talking about staff time and saving money, I can agree with going quarterly. But again, I would say for people that, you know, you gotta mark. If you wanna apply, apply. And the people that did put in, if there's something, an opportunity that comes up, I think that those people should be given some, some favor. They showed up and they followed the rules.
Mr. Mayor, it's just like most employers now who say, you know, if you fill out an application or a resume and you file it with Human Resources, they'll keep them for a year. So, a position comes up three months, six months later. You don't go out and advertise and again that you need to fill it. You can go back to your applications and pick from the ones of the people who've already applied.
Yeah, today you do.
You don't have to keep doing the whole process over all the time.
Mayor, mayor, if I may?
Oh, go ahead Kelly, or.
Thank you. There is a lot of staff time involved even on the back end if we pulled from the Talent Bank. We made several phone calls, we follow up with an email, and then we called them twice before their interview just to remind them. So we called them like the Thursday before we shut down and then we called them again that Monday just to remind them. So, there is a lot of staff time involved even though it would, we'd be pulling from the Talent Bank.
Your honor.
Sounds good.
So, let's just say hypothetically, Brian, let's say planning and zoning, something happened and we lost enough members in one week that made it so there was not a quorum. Would we then step in as a city and set up a, a meeting to appoint new people immediately? Or would we wait till October?
So if, if we go by what we have now, we, we had done that where we've come forward and we will utilize a process to have you get going on it. If you tell us tomorrow night you wanna give us a policy, it can change from that. But yes, for those boards.
So we would never leave it without a quorum?
Correct, we would immediately.
Why wouldn't we say unless it breaks the quorum, just leave it as it is? If it breaks the quorum, then, then we jump in and we start appointing the people?
And that's how we've done it, so we've done a few mid-year, midstream adjustments. Planning and zoning a couple of times and I wanna say Sewer Board, we've had some issues. And you've all have done it when we needed it on, on those. And that's how we do it now, that's the practice now. You would be formalizing that if you changed it tomorrow.
Wouldn't the quorum kind of filter down with, like let's say planning and zoning has seven, one drops out, now a quorum is?
Still four.
Four, let's say you got, let's say two drop out, quorum's still four? Or is it's a majority? So four is the magic number, anyway you look at it.
It's the majority of the seven-member board.
But if you didn't, that's what I'm saying though, if you don't have seven members, but it's a seven-member board. So you would have to literally drop three, three people.
You'd have to literally drop three, but.
You'd have to drop four, not to have a quorum.
You'd have to lose three, right, or four.
You have to lose four.
Some boards also have five, it's like the Personnel Retirement Board. That one's a little more interesting because they get to pick their own attorney now. And they basically, if it goes down below three, that could be a problem for the state level where they're supposed to recommend a retirement. Well now, is that, is that void because you didn't have a quorum? Now, that's a legal issue, we've never had that problem, but we do get down to three occasionally. So that could be a problem.
What board is that?
That's the Retirement Board for Public Safety. And we, you get more and more retirements if they want, if they're on drop.
Is that, that's appointed by council? I don't recall appointing that one.
Sure.
We didn't have any vacancies.
Yeah, but they're usually, they're appointed by council.
So in summary.
So that would fall under the Priority Board?
It would.
That one would.
If we had a spot, if we, if we get anywhere where staff comes to me and says, Brian, I'm getting nervous about quorum attendance or quorum issues, we'll bring it forward. And that's how we've done it before.
So, I, I like what you said though, is if we go down to that quorum, have that trigger to have the interviews.
For an appointment, right.
For appointments, instead of making everybody always jump. Because, because if you have the six.
So what we're weighing out is, is it worth staff time if we have a quorum? We have a quorum, is it worth the staff time, the money, the effort to fill vacancies when we have a quorum? That's what we're discussing. There's, there's vacancies, but we have a quorum, we're okay. Is it worth putting that extra on staff outside of the annual application? Probably not from what we're hearing.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I don't think it's worth, you know, investing all that time and effort for staff if, if we don't have to.
Absolutely.
So I mean, even a quorum like plus one. So, let's say four, I mean, that's a quorum, so I mean, you don't wanna just hold your breath on that in case someone dips out one week. But if you have five, okay, let's trigger something. Five on a seven, if you're down to five on a seven, that should trigger something to say, let's get another one in there.
Which I will say, that has actually happened on planning and zoning in the last few years. We had a member unfortunately pass away and then one resign within two weeks of one another. And that, you know, that's a board that I think especially if then at that point, one person calls out or two people call out, then they can't meet. So, that was another piece of that discussion that, that thought, the thought process that I had weighed is something like planning and zoning, if we get down to that number, then what happens? Business gets postponed and things start getting delayed.
So a quorum, a quorum plus one then? So if planning and zoning gets down to five, it triggers a, an appointment process regardless of the time of year? But if it gets down to six, well, then October it is.
Which is how it currently is.
Which is what we do now.
That's how we've been doing it, yeah.
A quorum plus one is, but there's no set, I guess, policy on that.
Right, there's no, yeah, that's just been a practice we've done. And we, and, and Councilmember Biggs is right, it was a couple of years ago, we had to come in for that and it was a few years before that on Sewer Board.
And with the growth coming, we can't afford to risk having, you know, not, planning and zoning not meeting, I don't think, you know, more and more.
Correct, that's, that's an absolutely essential board.
And if we jump Health and Human Services up to seven, that gives you a buffer there.
Gives you a little help, yeah.
So we could move Health and Human Services up to seven starting October of next year? Leave it like it is now, but make seven. That way we're not screwing around with years.
Yeah, that's up to you, yeah.
You know, so we could change that and then add the wording about the quorum plus one, having a special interviews.
Which at that point would then that trigger the current bank of applicants or a new bank of applicants plus the current?
So that would be the next question is just about how to go about, do you, we go, and some of that may be as much as, did we just do this three months ago or four months ago? Or is this way, way beyond that and it's now, you know, July or something? You know, and we, what we've done in those cases, if it's, if it's been like six, eight, nine months, we just do a work session and we just say, hey, what do you, what do you want us to do? And then we'll hustle, and then Jennifer, we would hustle up a quick recruitment and do the sewer, do that, so. I mean, our practice has been working pretty good. We haven't had a lot of, a lot of, we had the situation recently with PNC that was a little, little tougher.
One of the only reasons that I gave some thought to possibly appointing people going back through the talent banks during the year and not waiting till October, that would then be less people come October that we would have to be interviewing to appoint. If we appoint, filled those vacancies earlier in the year. That, that was my reasoning behind that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that depends, if it's a term that's about to expire.
Right.
But if it's not, if it's a three-year term, yeah, then you've got other things going on. You know, the worst board is the water board, don't mess with those people.
We can appoint all new members of that board?
Yeah, appoint new members to that one.
In recent times, how often have we had an issue where we haven't had a quorum? Especially on, you know, PNC or Parks and Rec or the library?
Since those aren't boards or commissions that I liaison to, I just see notice of cancellation. I think Park and Rec or was Library, one of them had to cancel because they couldn't get a quorum. But that was not at the meeting, it was prior to the meeting. So there, other people had obligations for some reason that night.
So it was a timing thing?
It was a timing thing.
Not, not a quitting thing?
Right, but I will say this, last year you've had two people pass away, you had a person resign. Last year was an exceptional year where you lost some board members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've never seen a board drop below a quorum of members that are actually members. If someone's sick, maybe they couldn't meet, but other than that, I've never seen it in my twenty-four years here.
So it's a non-issue?
Well, and now with, especially that we can do it telephonically, if someone is sick, they can still attend.
Maybe.
Right.
They might not be able to talk, but.
So that kind of covers Health and Human Services and adding boards and board members. Still got Parks and Rec residency and then, and then the code law, code compliance lawsuit.
Well, where were we? Are we, is somebody interest, are we looking to expand Health and Human Services? I kinda didn't get a feel where.
Well, I think it's fine, yeah.
On the next.
On the October.
Next slide, we'll jump it up to seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that way we don't have to jiggle the dates, terms.
The other thing I noticed was there isn't a motion for the question on the board and application. So your motions may change tomorrow too. So just remember to adjust your motions accordingly.
Okay, and then in regards to the, the Parks and Rec Board, one of the things that I've had a lot of discussion with, with, I guess, non-residents is around the fact that they obviously utilize our parks and our services. They come to events and, and attend those, their kids use them, whatever that might be. But they, they don't really feel like they have a say in what happens. And of course, they are not residents of the community and I'm talking people up at the base of the mountain or, you know, even in Gold Canyon. And so my thought to that was while I don't want to add seats as a requirement of saying, like we have in Health and Human Services, I believe, that two of them, with no more than two being non-residents, but giving a preference that, that the board member or applicant is a, is a resident of the city, but not necessarily as a requirement. And then obviously restricting that to no more than the majority to be a non-resident.
Are you suggesting that somebody could, I wanna just clarify this. Are you saying that they could live in Apache Junction but not in the city limits? Or are you saying somebody from Mesa should be able to serve?
Not somebody from Mesa, and, and I guess that even with the Health and Human Services, that's a, it, I, I guess to get clarification on that, how do we clarify, or how do we?
The area of influence?
The zone of influence as they call it?
The zone of influence?
The zone of influence.
Now, are you also suggesting that, let's say we have, you got the two, two seats coming up in October, or maybe four at that point, just depends on who else. And then you've got eight people and four of them are residents. Would they take precedence over the non-residents?
Absolutely, that, that would be my thought, would be that it would be preferred. I think very similar how we do with CLI, we, it's a preference, but, you know, we, we don't necessarily require that. I actually know one person who's interested in being on Parks and Rec and lives in a, in a, one of the Pocket County Islands. So they can't be on it.
Would that not kind of shrink the pool? I mean, what if you had two people that lived in Gold Canyon or let's just say Pinell County, other side of Mountain View, let's say, that are well-versed and experienced in that board? But then you have some Apache Junction residents who just wanna join a board. We would put them ahead of the experienced people because they're not within the city limits?
I, go ahead, go.
Okay, this is probably not gonna be popular, but I don't really care. I don't give a rat's patootie what anybody at the base of the mountain or Gold Canyon wants to tell us to do in our city. And how many times have we heard people sit out there and say, we don't wanna be like everybody else? Well, you know what, if they wanna be, if they, they can use our parks, that's great. If they wanna have a say, then annex into the city.
There you go.
We tried this a couple of years ago, Gold Canyon doesn't wanna be a part of this. I don't want their damn opinions up here.
And I don't disagree with that at all, but then if we're gonna go down that route, let's remove the residency requirement with Health and Human Services and make those be residents too. If we're gonna have a policy, then.
That's okay.
But that's fine.
And I'm not discrediting that.
Because now, our population has changed.
Isn't it our job to pick the best people for these boards?
I agree.
Are we gonna go to Phoenix for the best people?
But I think they have to be our.
What applies here, I doubt Phoenix is gonna come apply here.
I mean, how?
But I, I, no, I do think that there's a zone of influence or whatever the heck you call that thing. I mean, I agree with that definitely and, and this. I, I mean, I agree with that definitely, and, and this was an opportunity in my thought to expand that pool of people because we might have the best qualified person, the best candidate might live on Mountain View, and, and we can't, you know?
Then annex into the city.
But that takes a lot more than just that one resident to be able to do that.
Maybe he wants to annex into the city, or she.
But the one resident can't annex their own piece of property if they're, if they're like that, so.
They have kind of done that, so.
They can, yeah, they can.
Um, but, but you know, I know a lot of good people that live up in Goldfield that want to, but it's like they know they can't. And it's like, I've told them, annex. The application and what you have to go through is on the website. Look it up. I think with the number of applicants that we have had, our talent bank is growing significantly. I mean, I've sat up here where we just were scrambling, trying to figure out how to, poor Judy Bori, I put her on some board because she didn't show up and couldn't say no. You know, it, it's kind of like, we're growing, we're right at the beginning of many, many more people coming here, and I think we have plenty of good talent for people.
And it's never been an issue of not having the quorum anyway. So, why are we concerned about letting, you know, going outside of the city limits?
This wasn't a, this, this wasn't a quorum thing with me, it was just broadening that pool of applicants and all of that.
Well, and especially for Parks and Rec, people all want to be on Parks and Rec and Planning and Zoning. I mean, those are our popular boards, if you want to call them that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Some boards under state law, if it says residency, it's residency, and P and Z is one of them. Park and Rec, no. I was asked to look into this, and you can mess with that one. Under, now, the county Park and Rec Commission, they have to be all county residents. But when it comes to the city, it's not restricted. There's no statute that says if you have a Park and Rec Commission that they all have to be city residents.
So, any of our city boards and commissions, we can say residents only.
You may do that, and there's some that you have to do it.
And what I'm hearing up here is that's the direction that most of you would like to go.
Which I would be in favor, I mean, if we're not going to, I have a problem with kind of picking and choosing which boards we do want city residents and which ones we don't, and I agree with Gail, I mean, wholeheartedly, if you want to be a part of the city and help make decisions, there's an area for you to do that. It's called inside the city limits. So, I think then that would be the next discussion that I'd be curious to have.
This isn't the greater Apache Junction area boards and commissions.
Not like the Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Mayor.
I was waiting for that.
There are some exceptions, like the, the technical individuals you'll need for the Construction Board of Appeals. They don't, not all of them have to be residents. Now, with arts, you have decided that some can be and some don't have to be. So, it depends on which board and commission you're talking about.
I think it's appropriate. I think that, I think the way that we have it set with the ones that need to be residents and the ones where we've opened it up, it, it, it just seems like there's appropriateness in those areas.
Well, I want to just throw out, for the sake of playing devil's advocate here, we've got a, how many more? 20,000 people coming in the next few years. So, to fill these boards and commissions probably is going to become lots easier. Or at that point, when we, I'm just picking the number out of a clear blue sky. If we get 20,000 more on top of our 40,000, now we've got 60,000 people, are we still going to want people east of here telling us how to run our city, you know? And, and when we have a, a large enough pool to draw from, so, just something.
I think at that time, we can decide.
Yeah.
I think that's something in the future.
Your Honor, and tonight was tonight, to just brainstorm my idea, that's what, you know, this was an open opportunity. We did do a little research and asked Mesa, Chandler, Tempe, Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, Pace and Goodyear, Glendale, Avondale, Coconino County, Buckeye and Casa Grande, and all of them say that they're, for Parks and Rec, now, remember each, each board, like Councilmember Schroeder said, could be different, but except for some, Joel says there has to be residencies. They require residency for their, for their, for their Parks and Rec.
That's reasonable. That's reasonable.
Now, Florence has a seven-person commission, and they have a, a system more like what Councilmember Biggs talks about, which is a seven-person commission, four must-be residents. They kind of lean towards residency, but they have an area called their planning area, which could include three of those folks, four.
Well, and I did see something in here, and I don't remember the line where it says, but something about like an ex officio member, that they're a board member, but they're not a voting member?
Yeah, so that sounds like what I, I am at the Chamber of Commerce. So, I'm an ex officio member of that, but I don't.
The CDC.
Yeah, so like that, so I don't vote, but I'm on the, I get to go listen to the discussion. Okay.
All right.
But as of right now, yeah, it's not, not, it's a residency for AJ.
Okay, and then the aspect on the former, well, the, the question that was on the, the application.
It was a new question that was added to the application.
Correct.
That we were trying to figure out how it got on there without a council consensus.
So, I don't think, we've done some research, Jennifer, I don't know if you want to answer, but me and Matt are, and we can, we can answer, but we were not able to find where that genesis was. We apologize. It, you know, Jennifer, do you want to add?
We did a ton of research. We watched six months of videos of work-study session and council meetings, reviewed all of the 2020 and 2021 council minutes.
Oh, my.
Went through emails to and from individual staff members, and then by subject of just even one word, amending, application, board, commission, we were not able to find it. However, I will say that many of us recall, not all of us, but recall the, the discussion here in chambers. I even went through my draft minutes of the retreat, and board and commission appointment process was discussed there. I just don't have that specific item listed there. My note was a little too vague, so I would hate to assume that that was what my note meant. But it did make it on the application and its council's direction.
It's unfortunate that it took that much time researching to find it, but where I got, where I got a little bit upset about that is it's a new question, and it's something that should have gone through council to have a consensus, and there was not. That was my first concern.
I thought we talked about it at the conference, at our retreat.
The June retreat. I will say that staff would never change anything either without a direction to, to staff, or if there wasn't direction, it was a, a head nod from all of you saying, mm-hmm, because you've done that before.
That's all Evelyn did through that whole retreat, was head nod.
Yeah, we don't have minutes or records of the retreat, and so it could have been, we could have talked about that in June, but we, but I thought you said Jennifer may have been on there before. I don't know when we changed it, because that would help us know. And I don't know if this discussion really helps us too much in figuring out what we want to do today, tomorrow on your direction of staff.
Well, it's incredibly intrusive, and if we're going to have questions like that on the application, what's it going to be next time? Is it going to be, do you have a, a, do you have a citation with animal control? I mean, what is, how far do we go if we start digging in? I just don't, are we going to do background checks? I don't think there was ever consensus to, I remember a little bit of a conversation. I don't ever remember a consensus from the council, and in my opinion, it has no business being on that application. It's too intrusive. We're, look, we're talking about people that are volunteering. It's a separate issue. If somebody has a code issue, they need to take care of their code issue. That's their personal business. It doesn't get brought onto the board, and to even ask that question, in my opinion, is completely inappropriate.
I have a question for, I don't know, Brian or Joel. Would we hire somebody as an employee if they were suing the city at the same time?
I figured you wanted me to answer that.
Yeah.
Sorry to ask that, but...
Well, I'll tell you what, that does create a conflict if someone's actually in litigation. But would it disqualify someone from employment legally? Probably not. I don't think it would.
Okay, so legally, it probably would not, but that didn't answer my question. Would we hire somebody?
That's a policy question. There you go, Brian.
So, we've, not aware of any issue that's come up like that, Matt, of you, but.
Two separate issues.
Yeah.
So...
Well, but they're both issues.
And there's a difference between a volunteer and an employee, huge difference.
They're both issues, though. You can't represent the city and be suing the city at the same time.
Well, I disagree with that, but I disagree with it because, so are we, are, are we then going down the path saying that any one of the council members, any one of the board or commission members, while they're serving their term, can't sue the city, have a code case, have an issue with the city, because there are council members who have code issues open for different reasons. There are board members and commission members who have code cases open. I venture to guess that through our 30-some-odd year history or longer, we've had staff members that have had code compliance issues or legal issues that they're starting a lawsuit with the city, and...
What if a board member walks out of here and trips and fall on, on a crack in a sidewalk? Now, that could be, become a potential lawsuit or, or whatever, you know what I'm saying? It could become an issue in that regard. Where does it begin and, where does it begin and end? That's my concern. You start cracking the door for this, who are we going to get to volunteer? They're going to tell us.
I don't think anybody on the Planning and Zoning Commission, on Boards of Adjustment, should have a frickin' code case. Period. An elected official.
That would have excluded me.
An elected official is a whole different deal. These are people that are supposed to know what our codes are, and, you know, 90, Brian said, 99% of the people with code cases fix them. But we do have people that don't fix their code cases.
So, what if the board, or Planning and Zoning Commission member has a code case and fixes it?
We have.
That's not the problem. It, it's just on new people coming on. They don't know everything. If, if a commissioner has a code problem, I'd hope to hell he was working on fixing it. I mean, it shouldn't go for six months.
So, we only care while they're applying, and then once they're on the board, we don't care anymore?
Well, once they're on the board, no, we don't kick them off the board.
Why do we not let them handle it with staff on their own?
They already have an issue.
Why does it have to come onto the board? That is a totally separate issue.
I mean, if they're working on it during the application process, they're working on it. We don't have any right, and I agree with Krista, we have no right to inquire what that issue is and go forward and say, well, what is Joe's issue that they, that they have a code compliance issue? How big is it? Are they working to fix it and move forward?
I don't think we're saying that we're going to judge that one way or the other. It's just a qualification question.
So, if it's...
Yes or no. It didn't stop the application from coming to us, right?
Right. No, it's just a question.
It's just a question.
But if, if we're not going to judge it, and, and from what I just heard you say, that's not going to stop us from judging it. If we're not going to judge it, why ask? Why do we care? At that point, we're just asking a question to ask, quite frankly, a bullshit question.
And I get back to how did the question even get on the application without a council consensus?
If, if we don't care about the answer to the question, and it's not a disqualifying factor, why are we asking it? There's no reason for it.
Your Honor.
But I think it could be a disqualifying factor. If you have other good ones, and these people have a code problem, and they want to be on Planning and Zoning.
Okay, so...
Is that a consideration?
Then we have to go play judge during execution, or what the code problem is, what, what they're doing about it.
No, there's no judge during your execution, or...
Well, I, I, so, does anybody have that question on hand, the exact wording, is, does it say?
I read it.
Anything that's, so, it, does it say if you're involved, if you have an open code case or suing the city or in legal litigation with the city, is that?
We'll open it up, Councilmember, right now.
It just says, do you have an open?
I think it's just a yes, no question.
Are you in litigation with it? Okay, so, the litigation, the litigation is kind of a, I'm, I'm, what I'm gathering here is kind of a separate issue. This is, we're kind of wrapped around the whole code thing. Now, is there a board that any of these people can be appointed on, have the authority to change anything to get rid of their code case?
They're one person? No.
Right, so, I mean, so what would be, what would be the issue there? I mean, as far as even asking the question.
If, if they got on and they had an existing code case, something was, I don't know, before the Board of Adjustment, and it was their case, they'd have to conflict off.
There you go.
Or, and let's say if it was a planning and zoning issue.
If they had a active zoning matter.
That would still come to the council.
They could, yeah, but they still could not vote on their own case. How could they be an applicant?
Right, no, right, exactly. Let's say, let's say they're doing, they're, they're in violation of something that is on the table that could be changed, where they're no longer in violation of it, not them particularly. It's not like, oh, John Smith, you know, you have this problem. Let's, let's just say, you know, semi-trucks, some guy's got a semi-truck in his yard, and then all of a sudden, through a, a, a zone change, it's like, well, now you're allowed to have semi-trucks in your yard, but this guy has, is in, is in litig, or in, you know, not in compliance and has an open case over this, even if he did say, oh, yeah, I totally agree with that, that would still come to us and decide whether or not that...
If it's a zoning case, yeah.
Right.
If it's a CUP, not necessarily. You may not ever see the CUP.
But the CUP would, would that, how would that change on an individual basis?
Well, say someone wants to open up another marijuana place, and they want to get a CUP for it. And they go before the P and Z to do it, and they're, they're a member, and they decide that, I'm going to vote on this. This is my application. That would first of all be a conflict.
Well, yeah, that, that would be, that's around that anyways.
And then it would never go to council unless somebody appealed it.
Here's another thing, if, how could it, how would it, I'm trying to think of a circumstance where somebody would have a lawsuit against the city that the council wouldn't be aware of it.
It could be a code case. It could be going in front of the judge.
Where we wouldn't be, we would be aware, we, we don't need to ask that question. We're going to know. So, it, again, I just, I'm not understanding, and I'm going to go back to, where is the direction of staff? This is no fault to staff. I don't want staff to feel like I'm targeting them in any way. I just want to know how that happened, because there, where is the documentation that there was a consensus on this council outside of somebody saying that they wanted that on the application?
Well, I think we've pretty much decided that we can't figure that out, so, I mean, I think it's, so it's pretty much a moot point.
My point is, it shouldn't be on there, then. I don't have any right to go to a staff member and say, I want this changed.
You know, personally, I'm on the fence on this because I have 50 years, have yet to fill out an application for anything that didn't ask a question about...
That's an employee application.
Or, or if you were to volunteer at places, they're going to ask you, some places, heck, we got, we've got a garden going up, and people are getting fingerprinted just to work in this garden. I mean, these are, these, this is, every, every, excuse the expression, every aspect of what's happening here, no matter what you do or where you go, you're going to have to answer questions regarding your history before you are hired, appointed, volunteer.
But that's your history as somebody who's convicted. Have you ever been convicted of a DUI, a drug felony? Have you ever been to prison?
Right.
Not, are you currently in a lawsuit with somebody in the world over some issue that may or may not matter?
So, if we were to put in the application for Planning and Zoning, have you ever been convicted of a DUI? That would be acceptable?
If it's relevant to doing the job, what I...
Well, he's got a drive here.
Not at all.
But that's not...
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, though, is, is, you know, we can't...
There's a difference between a paid employee and a volunteer, though. How are we, why don't, why not just start doing background checks? Do you realize that I got a ticket for a dog being loose in my yard? No offense, he was in my yard. I have an acre and a quarter. It was a crime back then, and I have a criminal record because of it. Are, are we going to exclude people for that?
I would think that's up to us. Let's, let's say you looked at the application, and it was checked yes. Would that deter you?
Why would that be relevant to somebody serving on our board?
I'm not saying that it's relevant or irrelevant. I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. On one hand, I agree with you. I mean, where does it stop? I mean, what, at what point do we say, okay, strip down, we're going to, we're going to throw the fire hose on you before you get...
You open this door, and down the road, it's going to, you're going to get more of it.
But at the same time, it's, it's nothing uncommon to ask of people who are going to be putting into a position to shape a city. It's not uncommon, volunteer or not, these people are going to make decisions that is, for generations to come, that's going to impact the city. And if they have a grudge, or if they're, have a lawsuit, that could very well weigh on their decisions that they make.
So, address it on an individual basis. If an issue comes up, then you pull them aside and address it. You can easily address it. Look, I can tell you about some conflicts of interest if we want to dig deep about a newspaper owner that embarrassed people intentionally as a, as a board member, went after council members here. I mean, you want to start talking about conduct? We can, we can dig in.
Quit going there.
Yeah.
We can, we can dig in, I mean...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Do you want to ask Joel a question?
We have like three conversations going on.
Joel.
Who has the floor, your mayor? Who has the floor right now?
Joel, if, if we ask questions about someone, if they've got, or suing the city or something like that, and we don't appoint them, or even if they're an employee and they don't get hired, and then they sue the city, how's the courts, how does that work? I mean, how do they look, the courts look at, are we taking away somebody's right to sue the city, and then we're punishing them by not appointing them, or hiring them, or all of that? Okay.
It's almost 8:30. I could go on for an hour about that. But generally, I'll just give you a quick answer. For employment, more and more, you cannot ask, "Have you been convicted of certain crimes?" And that is becoming more and more, that you can't have that in your application. For volunteers, that's a policy decision, but someone might say, "Well, that's an invasion of privacy. I'm going to, I don't like that. I think you shouldn't have that as a question, and I'm going to sue the city for that question alone." You might get that. But generally, I can tell you, it's, from a nationwide standpoint, I've seen it in different states, but I'm seeing it here, too. And HR will tell you, we don't, we can't really ask those questions anymore about, "Have you been convicted of," depending on what kind of position you're applying for. Police is different, but for a commercial driver's license job, I think you should be able to ask, "Have you been convicted of a traffic violation?" But on other things, like for a janitor, or for other ones, that don't rise to that level, and it doesn't matter if they have like a petty misdemeanor, or even a traffic offense, then...
You're going to fill in?
You're going to fill it. For city manager, city attorney, judge, those are the higher level ones. Police chief, you know, I, I think you should ask those questions, but, because they represent your city.
We have had times when board members' conduct was inappropriate, and it was addressed individually. They were pulled aside and said, "Look, you're a representative of this community." Rightfully so.
And you have a code of conduct.
But you can't, you can't, somebody could get a DUI, somebody could leave here, you know. Things happen. You...
And you do have a code of conduct that was adopted in 2019.
That many people break anyways, that we've never done anything about.
When's that ever been brought forward to do something about? Actually, I will tell you, because I was one of them.
Who did what?
Did what?
I was brought before the council, when I was a board member in 2018, on a supposed conflict of interest, and a particular council member, actually, a current council member and a former council member tried to remove me from said board for a conflict of interest, myself and another board member. So...
Who were you?
No, I was not. But...
They were publicly humiliated.
We were publicly humiliated, and our names were dragged through the mud over nothing. So I don't disagree that we have people that, that do different challenges, but if we're going to go down that route, if we're going to go down that route, though, then that's the only time in four years that that has ever been brought forward. And if we've got board members, or if we have council members, for that matter, who are doing something, then let's call that out, and let's get them off that board.
So, Brian, can we look at a few other cities' applications and see what questions they have and don't have for just their Parks and Rec, planning and zoning? Just to make it simple.
I'm not interested in thinking that time.
I'm not either.
Our applications were fine till this issue came up.
And I'm sorry, we, did we not just talk about, we don't care what other community members, or if you don't live in the city, then we don't care how you work in our city? Guess what?
I didn't bring up the other cities. They did.
But you're asking to look into, you know, what other cities do. They don't live in our city. I don't care what they do.
It didn't disqualify anybody.
So then why are we asking the question?
Because if someone's, why I think it's a good idea, if someone's applying for Parks and Rec, or planning and zoning, and they have ongoing code issues, how do they know to establish new codes? How do they know if they don't follow what we have now?
Okay, then the, then the, then the real discussion needs to be establishing a set of disqualifying factors for any board or commission moving forward. Because I could agree with that point, and that is a valid point. But if we're going to go down that route, and we're going to establish a one-off question that came out of left field that council never had a discussion about, at least on public record, then how did that get on there, which we've established and we can't find, then the discussion should really be, are we going to go down a path of setting up a series of disqualifying factors to be on a board or commission, which then this could be a part of?
But that question in itself did not disqualify anybody.
Maybe not this time, but it shouldn't be on there to begin with.
And who's to say it didn't?
But that's what I'm saying.
But who's to say it didn't disqualify somebody? It may not have disqualified them in my view, but it could have in yours.
Well, I think at that point, it's like, do they have, you know, it gives us an opportunity to say, you say that you have some code issues. What are they? It gives us an opportunity to ask.
It is no more right of our, sorry, Brian, it is no more of our right to ask them of that question than it is to sit at this dais and ask an applicant if they have a valid business license. It does not matter. It is not applicable, and it should not be asked.
Gosh.
It has every right to ask that.
Are you kidding me?
Brian? So I was just going to say, so...
Oh, my goodness.
Stop, stop.
We've covered, covered this to a great extent. Tomorrow night's a great opportunity to give us direction, if you want us to take, I don't know, I guess I would ask from a process-wise, Joel, based on what I'm hearing tonight, Health and, do we need to do three different motions on direction to staff, so there's three different clear votes?
You could do 10 motions if you'd like, but I know that didn't help you, but it's policy on a lot of this. But Brian's right, direction to staff for tomorrow night, and you need specific motions. And they need to be seconded and then voted on. And they need to be specific. That's, I think, what you're asking.
That's it. So like, for the Health and Human Services, one?
That's two separate ones for each one.
That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get at, Mayor.
Separate motion for each one.
Yeah. Otherwise, we'd be coming up with combinations and not get seconds or anything else all night long. Make them three different motions.
Being that we never voted to get this question on the application, why do we have to vote to get it off?
I agree.
Well, that's a policy decision.
We can, yeah, I mean, we can go look, that's a whole nother question in and of itself. We can do some more research to find out why any question gets on a board.
So this would just make it official, rather than wasting staff time?
Right, right.
Let's just make a motion and...
And you could make the motion, and then if you have the votes, then you could end that question. I mean, council doesn't, didn't write these, the talent bank application from years ago. It just came out, and it was an evolution of how those questions were created. And I think Kathy probably wrote most of them. Probably not this last one, but...
No, that would have been kind of, that would have been kind of hard.
That would be...
I don't know. Kathy might have been able to figure that one out, too.
That took me a second.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close the meeting. Thank you.
Go home.